I'd like to call over the regular township board meeting, Chesterfield Township, Tuesday, September fourteenth at seven P. M. All stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Clerk Barry. Would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Kirsten.
Here.
Treasurer Elliott.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Joseph.
Here.
Trustee Demink.
Here.
Trustee Vossberg.
Here.
Clerk Barry is here.
Item four, approval of the agenda. Clerk Barry.
Item A is approval of the agenda with addendum if necessary. Mister Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support? Motion by Clerk Barry, support by trustee Joseph. Clerk Barry, call the roll.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Demink.
Aye.
Trustee Vossberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye. Item five, presentations, item five A.
Item five A is a recommendation from the police department to recognize the individuals that handled and responded to the two homicide calls during the weekend of July second.
Captain Franks, Captain McNair.
This will probably come as a surprise, but I'm not going to be long-winded for this. I just want to start, like, since I took this job, I keep getting asked, is it tough taking this job? And the simple answer is no. And it's no because of the people that stand before you right now. Day-to-day, every single one of these officers, dispatchers, both in front of you and the ones that are stationed, the ones that are home that couldn't make it tonight, make Chesterfield what it is. Their commitment to our department and the safety of this township is unmatched. There's no department that could compare with Chesterfield the way they are. Sergeant Anderson's up north, Fourth of July weekend, coming home on a Sunday to beat the traffic, gets a phone call about the homicide they're investigating the night before, where Detective Suppen, Detective Lee, Detective Swanson, Detective Dawidawitz responded from home after Sergeant Meyer called them and put an all call out for the other department. We had numerous officers respond from home on a Fourth of July weekend when most of us were enjoying the holiday. They came in voluntarily just to help out with the officers. They had one homicide on a Saturday night and not even twenty-five hours later, a second homicide. Eric Meyer had to go through the same exact protocol, calling everybody in. We had officers respond again. They were able to pull the evidence work. It's Fourth of July weekend. Obviously, it's not the only calls we took that weekend. So officers that came in that didn't participate in the homicide obviously had to run out and shag calls on their own. They didn't have backup officers for every call they went on, and everybody did it without any complaints. What you see before you is an example of exceptional professionalism and dedication from our public safety department, and they all deserve to be awarded. That's really all I got to say.
Captain, Captain Franks, when you're done giving the oldest guy of the group his award, would you, would you publicly describe what the award is that they're getting, the unit citation?
Yeah, they're receiving a unit citation.
There's, there's many awards they, they could have achieved in it. Because it was such a team effort, what we awarded was a unit citation. Every one of them deserves a chief's commendation and then some. But because they worked as a team and no individual really stood out shining, everybody worked as a cohesive unit to make this thing work perfectly. At the end of it, both suspects were charged with homicide and are currently waiting trial. The prosecutors thought what they did was exceptional, and that goes from the very beginning, person taking the call, all the way to the detectives that sought the warrant and did the interviews at the end. The unit citation is the best word they could get for this because they really did work as a team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Few words from myself, as Captain Franks and Captain McNair proudly led this department. It's nothing but a privilege to have all of you here in front of us tonight. Very proud of what I see in front of me and very proud that you represent Chesterfield Township Public Safety Department and Chesterfield Township as a whole. So thank you personally from myself. And I would, would the board like to add on? Please go ahead. Item five B, Clerk Barry.
Item five B is a proclamation of appreciation presented to Cynthia Sfar as a representative of Prime America Financial Services for assistance in the November third, 2020 general election. And Mister Supervisor, I'm not sure Cynthia's made it tonight. I don't believe she was able to make it, so we will present her with this proclamation at a later date.
Thank you very much. Item six, department reports. I'll start with the board. Trustee Demink.
From Leisure Services, the Leisure Services Department is coordinating a COVID vaccine clinic with Macomb County Health Department. Advanced registration is required to, to be administered vaccine on October sixth between the hours of eleven A. M. and two P. M. Individuals ages twelve and older are eligible for the vaccination, which will be administered at the Chesterfield Township offices. Those receiving the vaccine at our onsite October sixth will return to location on October twenty-seventh for a second dose of the Pfizer vaccine. Visit Chesterfield Leisure Services website or nine four nine zero four hundred to make extension for to make your appointment. Friday, September twenty-fourth from six to seven thirty, bundle up and join us for an outdoor concert featuring Dr. Jimmy and Mr. Jim playing classic rock. Bring your lawn chairs and snacks. This free community concert sponsored by Genesis Credit Union will be held out front of the Township Municipal offices. Come relax, take in the fall colors, and enjoy the crisp fall air. And lastly, limited time remains to explore our park system and discover art around town. Nine replica pieces are on display in Chesterfield as part of the Detroit Institute of Arts program. There's plenty of history to discover, art to participate, and connective pathways to traverse as the fine arts are incorporated into the natural beauty of the Anchor Bay area. There's no better time of the year to visit Brandenburg, Weber, and the Township offices, its historical village, or Veterans Memorial Wall. Artwork maps and scavenger hunt worksheet can be picked up at Leisure Services Department. Thank you, Mister Supervisor.
Trustee Vossberg? Nothing. Treasurer Elliott.
Thank you, Mister Supervisor. This week, I met with the supervisor and clerk to discuss updating purchasing policy, APO eleven, two thousand and nineteen, to reflect recommendations that were made by the township attorney. This update will reflect the adoption of a purchasing card program to provide, to provide better internal controls. In this meeting, we also discussed a comprehensive look at the township's social media and website. I would like to thank residents for their patience in navigating through the construction here at the municipal building to make their tax and water bill payments as last few days, and today was the last day to pay your taxes without penalties. Thank you, Supervisor.
Trustee Joseph.
Thank you, Mister Supervisor. Just to be brief, with regard to the library, a number of great events happening at the library this month. First of all, our, the Board of Trustees meeting is tomorrow night at six thirty at the library. But with school being back, I wanted to make the residents aware that in addition to the usual things that occur at the library, which is the Friends of the Chesterfield Library Used Book Sale, which will occur on September seventeenth and eighteenth, there are also a number of programs designed to help students returning to the classroom. Those are everything from the Crazy Eight Math Club, which is geared towards the younger kids, to a number of other homework assistance and tutoring opportunities. The Teen Advisory Board meets on September twenty-fifth, and there are a number of workshops and classes that can be found on the Chesterfield Township Library website. And I would urge residents and parents looking for some support for back-to-school students to check that out, and there's a number of programs that require registration but are free. So again, please visit the Chesterfield Township Library website and take advantage of some of this free programming. Thank you.
Clerk Barry.
Thank you, Mister Supervisor. From the Clerk's Department, we do have our passport late night for September, this Thursday, September the sixteenth. We recommend that you register online to secure your spot, although walk-ins are available and allowed. But if you want to be sure that your spot is reserved, especially if you have a large group or family that is coming in for passports on that late evening, you'll want to go to our website and register online for that event. From the Elections Department, A. V. ballots were just received in the Clerk's office, and they are being prepared for mailing. If you requested an absentee ballot for the upcoming November special general election to fill the vacant state senate seat, we would have need to have received an absentee ballot application completed by the voter in order to issue your ballot. So if you are expecting your ballot, if you have submitted that completed application to us, your ballot is being prepared at this time, and we do expect that to be going out in the next week or so. Thank you.
My apologies, trustee Anderson.
Thank you, Mister Supervisor. Just a reminder that this Saturday, September eighteenth, between ten A. M. and four P. M., there'll be heritage days at the historical village next door. Enjoy photos and games. A kid tent will be available, which they'll be able to make candles, rope making, corn shucking and grinding, possibly cider pressing, scavenger hunt, craft show, blacksmithing. Food and drinks will be available for purchase. The interest fee is a donation of a dollar per person or two dollars per family. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Anderson. Item, department reports. Any department reports? Seeing none. I move to item seven, consent agenda. Clerk Barry.
All items under the consent agenda are considered routine by the board and will be enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of these items. If discussion of any item is required by a board member, it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Public comments on the consent agenda items are permitted. A, approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of August twenty-fourth, 2021, and the special board meeting of August thirtieth, 2021. Item B, approval of the payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department. C, approve a payment to general code for laser fish licenses, annual renewals, and support in the amount of eleven thousand seventy-five dollars from G. L. Number one zero one two two eight nine three four zero zero zero. D, approve a recommendation by the Department of Public Safety to pay an invoice from D. G. Fury Electric in the amount of five thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars from G. L. Number two zero five three four zero nine seven six zero zero zero. And E, approve a recommendation from the Public Safety Department to pay seller's commission, broker's fees for the sale of Rescue One C. S. I. G. M. C. four-by-four wet rescue truck to Discan Annex Volunteer Fire Company, West Mifflin, Pennsylvania, commissioned in the amount of seven thousand dollars to be paid to Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus per enclosed invoice and supporting documentation for handling the sale of this vehicle from account number two zero five three four zero nine eight six zero zero zero.
Mister Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of consent agenda item B, which is the approval of the payment of bills, and ask that that be considered separately.
Support?
Support.
Trustee Joseph requests approval, or makes a motion to approve with the removal of item B, seconded by trustee Demink. Clerk Barry, call the roll. Comments from the public?
John, speak of five three nine seven eight, Hunter Drive. Quick question in regards, since item B has been pulled now from the agenda, if I have a comment regarding item B, would I speak now or wait till it's brought up?
I'm sorry, sir.
Since item B was pulled from the, as a separate item by trustee Joseph, if I had a couple of comments to make in regards to B, would I speak about it now or wait till it's brought up for discussion?
When it's brought up for discussion.
Thank you.
Motion by trustee Joseph, seconded by trustee Demink, to approve the consent agenda with removal of item eight B to be regular agenda item. Any further public comments? Clerk Barry, call the roll.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Demink.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Vossberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor, excuse me, Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
I will make item B, item under the regular agenda, item eight A. Clerk Barry.
Item eight A is approval of the payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department.
Mister Supervisor, if I may...
Item eight. B. Sorry, my mistake. Eight B would be item, or seven B would be item eight A. Clerk Barry.
Mister Supervisor, I'd make a motion to approve the payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department.
Support.
I'll bring it to the board for discussion.
Mister Supervisor, if I may?
Trustee Joseph.
The request for the removal has to do with a number of expenditures coming out of the Clerk's office. Had an opportunity to talk with trustee Anderson as well as trustee Demink prior to the meeting and was looking for some clarification. And also whether or not the report that was made by treasurer Elliott with regard to purchase cards could impact this agenda, the specific agenda item and future transactions. So I'll defer to the specific issues to, to trustee Anderson, and then if at some point in the discussion, treasurer Elliott might be able to expound, I'd appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
Okay, I believe the specific items that we're looking at here is under the election office, page thirty-three, specifically ledger one zero one dash one ninety-one dash seven forty dash zero zero zero. Do you want me to read them all off? The, that item, the next one's one zero one one nine one seven forty dot zero zero zero. Operating supplies, also one zero one dash one nine one dash seven forty dot zero zero zero. And one zero one dash one nine one dash seven forty dot zero zero zero. And also under the Clerk's office, department two fifteen, operating supplies, specifically one zero one dash two one five dash seven forty dash zero zero zero. I request discussion on those.
Treasurer Elliott.
The question that's being asked is, will this, will the purchasing card program affect these purchases? Is that the question? Or are you referring to these, these items?
For me, it's two separate questions, so...
Yeah, right.
Whichever way, if you have an opinion on either of those, it would be appreciated.
Right. So I have, I did request, so let me get the easy one off, the, off the table. So the purchasing cards will provide internal controls, and we're looking into that, working with both Huntington and Comerica Bank currently, to see exactly how that will be, and that will affect the, the purchases made by all departments. So the internal controls and the level is still in discussion at this point with those two banks. That would be the, that's the easier answer. As far as the elections office purchases, one of the things is, is the catering for Chef Ramone's and also the bagels and such for Kroger's. I did request from the Clerk's office how many folks were catered at the dinner, and that was thirty-four, for Chef Ramone's were catered. And then the election day, there was, the bagels were submitted, bagels and what have you. That was submitted all in bulk, two different times, one hundred and thirty-six participants at one, under one, and one hundred and forty under another. Is that what you were looking for, questions?
Part, so Chef Ramone's thirty-four, thirty-five dinners in the amount of five eighty-five. My, my specific on these items are, under the election is, we've had this discussion before, is there a protocol in place where these expenditures should be made? Or are they just made because, you know, somebody decides to make them? Is, is there a board guideline that provides for this, providing food for, you know, various entities? That's the question I have, besides the expenditure itself, regarding the election office expenditures.
So that falls under the APO that we are talking about updating, and, which is what the, the attorney had suggested in two thousand and twenty, was that to just update that APO if that is going to be the standard procedures. And that was the discussion between myself and the supervisor and the clerk.
So at this point, it's, still has not been updated, though, correct?
No.
Mister Supervisor, just a quick follow-up on that, if I may?
Yes, trustee Joseph.
Thank you. The, along the same lines, we've been around the, we've been around the purchasing of this, and I think I know the answer. It's customary, and it's allowed, and it's, you know, we've gotten legal opinions on this, yet they persist. It would be nice to see this in a, in a APO, and I, and I really don't know. The, the interesting thing on the, on the bill run is Finance Department ahead of this has an expenditure for a television, for Finance Director Bauer's office. I can see where the TV is there. She's not watching soap operas during the day. Like, that's a business expense, and I've been in her office, and in using that as a monitor, you can see. But how does a mini fridge for the Clerk's office in, in other offices, if you're storing vials of, of maybe a fridge that we had, the, the pop-up clinic, and you put COVID vials that need to be refrigerated, you see the public good of that? How does a mini fridge for an elected official warrant township taxpayer expense? And I don't know if you can answer that, but is there a mechanism where that would come before some procedural order to say, this is in the public interest and therefore a righteous expenditure? Or does each department outfit their office with, you know, refrigerators and so forth? And why not have it extended to the employees if that's an acceptable practice? So I'm hoping the purchasing cards is your attempt to kind of dial in on this. It's been an ongoing debate, and it seems petty to talk about sandwiches and food, and but the procedure is really what it's about, and it just seems to be all over. And I, and I agree with trustee Anderson in terms of getting a straight answer on what's allowable and what isn't. So that was the reason for the pull, and your purchase cards sound like a great idea.
Those are all great questions, and I appreciate you asking them, and yes. So we have just, this was inherited, right? This, this is a discussion that you guys have had for a long time. And so what is the solution? And the, the solution is to, first of all, update the APO as recommended by the attorney back in 2020. And I do mention that because I think any... And I do mention that because I think any suggestions by the board or from the public would be helpful. I also want to say the mini fridge is a discussion that I believe has taken place between the clerk and the supervisor's office and whether or not that would be something to, whether or not that should be something that the clerk, but I will have to let her answer that question for herself. There are, there are other, other things that we also talked to, talked about that were on the bill run that fall underneath some of these purchases. And we talked about the Facebook page, the, the attendees for, for the MML convention and those types of things. And that's where it was an overall discussion about our social media and the website and the purchasing cards and using those and updating this APO as a, as a comprehensive way to kind of start tackling some of this stuff and maybe putting it in proper order. Thank you. And, and I believe the clerk and the supervisor can address the mini fridge.
Trustee Anderson.
Okay, round two, please. Getting to the refrigerator here. Your office, Mr. Lefada's office, you're the longest distance to go to the, to the break room where there's a refrigerator. Supervisor, you have a hike there. The old clerk's office was the closest one to the break room. The clerk moved across the way here, it's even closer, have to go through doors and I don't know, just what is the need of having a refrigerator there? I mean, if it's a HIPAA issue, that's a whole different thing, but just to have a refrigerator, are we going to start having dinets and all the, you know, throughout the building here? Is this the start of it or what? Thank you.
My apologies to Clerk Barry, I did not give her an opportunity to speak. Clerk Barry, please.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. And I understand all the questions and they're good ones because if I didn't know the background on all of these things, I would have the same questions that you have. Let's talk about the mini fridge first, that's probably the most, honestly, the disturbing one for me because of the reason why we needed it and why it's in my office secured. As absurd as this sounds, the fact is that we had employees whose lunches and items put in that refrigerator were being tampered with, thrown away. There was concerns that they were being, and I'll just say tampered with. There, the employees, several in my department, did not feel secure in leaving their lunches and other items in that communal refrigerator because of those things happening. So I suggested that I would be willing to put a small refrigerator in my secured office for anybody who wants to use it, not just my department, but any employee who feels uncomfortable or unsafe leaving their lunches in our community refrigerator could use that. And it would be locked in, in our doors and we own, there's only a couple of people that have access to that office so that they could feel rest assured that, that they could leave their lunches and any other medications or anything like that securely in that location. And so that's why we did it. It's, my understanding is there is an ongoing investigation or there was an investigation on the HR side to try to determine what went on there. And I'm not subject to, I'm not going to make comment on that other than to say that that was the purpose for it. It was unfortunate, we needed it for that reason, but it is available to any employee who is not comfortable leaving their personal food items or medication in the communal fridge. As far as the elections expenses for food and beverage for election workers, and again, yes, we have this conversation every election year, so probably we've had it 21 or 22 times now since I have been here, there is not a municipality anywhere in the state of Michigan that does not provide those things. And the reason for it is that your AV counting board, everyone who counts the absentee ballots is sequestered, just like a jury is. They are not allowed to leave and sometimes they may or may not be able to have access to a place where they can bring their own food and so forth. So we do provide meals for them. Again, there is not a municipality anywhere in the state that doesn't do that, townships or cities. That's, again, I hate to say customary and usual, you know, practice, but it is. And in this case in particular, because this was a special election, any special elections or primaries, we are in fact reimbursed for all of that. So it does not come out of our taxpayer dollars here at the township. We are actually reimbursed for that by either the parties or from whatever entities have asked for the special election. So in this, in the case of the ones that are in front of you tonight, these are all reimbursable and we will be receiving reimbursement for all of those because this was a special election. The only time we are not reimbursed is when there is a regularly scheduled election in November. So in that case, we are not reimbursed, however, we do still participate in that practice because it's just practical. Staff on election day often cannot leave when they're in the clerk's office just for practical matters. There's just, in order to allow someone to leave for various mealtimes, it just isn't practical because of the flow of traffic and in order to continue maintaining voter service and customer service throughout the day, they are often there, they are there at five in the morning and they are gone, you know, they are in that office and in that place until midnight, 1, 2, 3, sometimes 5 o'clock in the evening, fortunately, or the next morning. Fortunately, we've improved services and our processes tremendously in that we don't have that so much anymore, but still it is a very, very long day, usually 5:00 AM till usually 12:00 or 1:00 the next morning. So that is why all clerk's offices usually provide that. But again, what's, in order to keep it germane to these particular items, these will be, we will be reimbursed 100% for those. There is a state form that is filled out for reimbursement of all election expenses and there is a line item specifically for that particular expenditure. Also, I understand the changes to the purchasing policy, which I think will make it far more transparent and I think will make it just an easier process. I think it's a good thing to do. But also, this particular expenditure is in fact exempt from our purchasing policy as it is an election supply. So in the purchasing policy currently, there is an exemption for election supplies and this does in fact fall under that particular exemption. So there is no failure to adhere to the purchasing policy and this particular expenditure is in fact 100% reimbursable. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Barry. Any further discussion from the board? Trustee Joseph.
Thank you, I don't want to belabor this much longer. I'm very, very encouraged at Treasurer Elliott's entry into this discussion because it does keep coming up over and over and over and over again. I bring treats and refreshments to my staff. I think Treasurer Lefada, when he was here, talked about this as well. It's just a silly thing to keep coming up over and over and over again. And I, I had no idea that the refrigerator was going to go down the path of Clerk Barry having so many problems in the department that she needs, I don't know, will we be hiring a food taster for you? This is an HR-
Not, not for me, trustee Joseph, for the employees.
Oh, I see. That typically falls, I would think, you know, criminal acts of tampering and poisoning would, would maybe make the way over to Chief Franks or the HR director. I can't imagine the work environment permits tampering with food. And then the, the remedy is to secure the food supply in the clerk's office. It seems a bit bizarre to me, but I feel like every time we go down this rabbit hole, we get more and more ridiculous in the explanation. So I'm going to just let it go and hopefully Treasurer Elliott seems to be on to something. But I did hear the, the out already, which is try as hard as you will, this won't stop it. There's already policies and procedures, but I would like to see at some point the reimbursement for them because I don't think I've ever seen that. And I know that Ms. Bauer would be happy to show it to me if it ever came up. We got a check from the state and we got $1,000 worth of bagels and so forth and we got our money back. So that would be great to see. And the purchase cards, I, I really appreciate the policy and I'm content to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Joseph. Just some closing comments. Yes, we are addressing the purchase policy, the APO, and also we will entertain, once Treasury gets its finalized, a purchase card system for the entire township. I, public comments, comments from the public.
John Speaker, 53978 Connor Drive. Two comments I wanted to make were obviously discussed tonight, one being the mini fridge. I didn't realize we had such a huge issue in, at the township offices. But even with the issues that were brought up, I still feel that as a taxpayer and as a resident, it's a waste of taxpayers' money and I would ask the clerk to reimburse the township for the mini fridge. And this will probably be the 23rd time that I came up here to talk about the food expenditure. And I guess I'm tired of hearing customary, other townships do it, there's a line item on the form, we get reimbursed. I've never, I've never seen a reimbursement, I still haven't seen a reimbursement. I complained about it in the November election, I complained about it in the primary election, I've always complained about it. There was a memo that went out by our attorney last year. His opinion was, you know, that you can't do this, but if you want to do this, you need to change the APO. I am not in an agreement to change the APO. So I don't think that we should be paying for food, I don't think we should be wasting taxpayers' money. And I'd like to turn this ship around and start steering it in the right direction and stop wasting taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Paul Lefada, 48055, Mailer Drive, Chesterfield. This issue about buying food's been bouncing around for, you know, years. The other thing I have a problem with is we have the co-author of the ethics policy that breaks a policy. How ethical is that? What does our ethical, you know, ethics committee do? Or was that really just an APO out there to stonewall some of the board members that thought that unless it had some teeth, that we'll just put an ethics policy in and then we can throw out some flyers and say, well, I'm going to be ethical. But if there's a policy and you knowingly don't follow that policy, you're really not being ethical, you have no integrity. So, you know, some people should practice what they preach, but it all comes together. You have all these APOs and you're selective on which ones you use. And you bring them to the board, you tell the people you're going to, you know, this is how you're going to run the township and we're selective in how we do it. And it's been going on for eons. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? Bring it back up to the board, I have a motion by trustee Joseph, seconded by trustee Domingue. I'm sorry.
Mr. Supervisor.
I will correct that. Motion by trustee, or Clerk Barry, seconded by trustee, trustee Vosberg to approve item 8A.
Mr. Sup-
Trustee Vosberg.
I would like to offer and restate the motion to approve all the bills except for payment of the mini fridge.
Could you restate that for me?
Yes. I would just like to restate, the current motion I believe is to pay the entire bill run. I would like to change it to pay the entire bill run except for the mini fridge.
I have a motion by trustee Vosberg to pay the current existing bill run with the exception of the invoice related to the refrigerator.
Support.
Support by trustee Anderson. Clerk Barry, please call or roll.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Domingue.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten. Clerk Barry, aye. Recommendation by Supervisor Kirsten to appoint Aaron Gier to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term ending September 1, 2024.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by trustee Domingue, supported by trustee Vosberg to approve the recommendation of Aaron Gier to the appoint, the zoning board of appeals. Just some background on this. We interviewed this individual along with Gary DeMaster and Jonathan from Planning. This is a young individual, his application and his experience is included in the packet. We had two very good quality candidates. This individual, his experience where his current employer, he does work in the Department of Planning and he's also seeking a higher education. He thought that it would be a fresh individual to this committee and the benefit for the township with his existing experience, which he brings from an outside community, very close to us, would be beneficial. Any further discussion? I have a motion by trustee Domingue, supported by trustee Vosberg. Clerk Barry.
Trustee-
I'm sorry. Keep forgetting, public comment, comments from the public. No comments from the public? Again, Clerk Barry.
Trustee Domingue.
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
Item 8C, Clerk Barry.
Approve a request to appoint Michelle Nizey as the Freedom of Information Act Coordinator for Chesterfield Township and maintain Captain Brian McNair as the FOIA Coordinator for the Chesterfield Township Public Safety Department.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by trustee Joseph, supported by Clerk Barry. Comments from the public? Any comments from the board? Clerk Barry, please call or roll.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Domingue.
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Item 8D, Clerk Barry.
Approve a recommendation from Engineering to authorize Spalding DeDecker to move forward with the 2022 Sidewalk Replacement Program evaluations and contractor bidding for future board evaluation.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve trustee Domingue.
Support.
Support by trustee Vosberg.
Good evening, Board. Jeremy Schroth with Spalding DeDecker will give a brief presentation and then we are available to answer questions.
All right, thank you. A lot of this information is provided in your packet, so I'll be, I'll try to be somewhat brief. But towards the end of last year, we brought the annual sidewalk replacement program to the board. One of the goals we originally talked about was providing a safe network and non-motorized pathways. We broke that down into three different programs, starting with the annual sidewalk replacement program, then looking at the sidewalk ga, or looking at the non-motorized pathways and then looking at the sidewalk gaps. From, from there, we started with the annual sidewalk replacement program, which we're finishing year one in about a week. To the next slide. Next slide. Yep, next slide. Just a reiteration, the reason we're doing this is the township must do this in order to limit the liability to both the township and the residents. I know the township attorney spoke about this last year and we've continued on with that, with that mission. Next slide. The township is broken down into six zones, so as I mentioned, zone one is completing construction in about a week. What we're here today to talk about is zone two, which is scheduled for 2022 construction. Next. From there, we're, we're going to be evaluating the sidewalks based on the criteria we put together in that administrative guide towards the end of last year. On the right is, is the GIS plan that we put together that highlights all of the defects throughout the zone one, as well as information on what those defects were rated, who the owners are and pictures that were provided to the residents throughout the process. Next slide. Some of year, some of our year one highlights. We created the Sidewalk Replacement Program Administrative Guide. We created a specific township webpage that goes through a lot of the process that's involved with this, including some of the standard forms, the standard contact information of the sidewalks@chesterfieldtownship.org email address, as well as a specific hotline. All of those have been well utilized throughout, throughout year one and really helped head off a lot of questions before they reached the township level. We bid out year one's program, we received lower than anticipated bids from five different qualified bidders. We received lower than anticipated bids from five different qualified bidders. And I guess one other highlight was, out of the 882 participants, 148 thus far have added additional sidewalk beyond those mandated under the category five. Some of our next steps, we're talking about looking at sidewalk evaluations for year two. We're going to be sending out postcards once we identify those defects, look at bidding out the program, hosting the public hearings similar to how we did last year, and then getting into construction in the summer of '22. So, just some of the funding things that we talked, we talked about last year. The deficient slabs that are due to township water main or sanitary structures would again be funded through the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. And the sewer storm structures that are causing defects in the sidewalk would be handled through the Chesterfield Township Fund. And then all others would be assessed directly to the homeowner, similar to the process that we've utilized to date. And that's all we have for the sidewalk replacement program.
Bring it back up to the board for comments. Trustee Vosberg.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I have a question regarding, if you, if you don't know the answer, we can get it from finance, I guess, but do you know how many of the homeowners just paid for the full amount? And how many chose to do the five-year payment?
We won't know until the end of the program. At this point, we're still compiling the final quantities. Once construction is completed in the next week, a final assessment roll will be rolled out, and then we'll get those letters out to the homeowners with the payment options, as well as, you know, start either collecting on the winter tax bill or in advance. I know historically, it really varies township to township.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Thank you. Paul Laffata, 48055, Mailer. One of the questions I always ask on an agenda item is, I don't see a price tag. Price tags are always important. The other thing is, the last town hall meeting, the, the timing between the residents getting notified and the dead end, which I think was the end of August, was so short, it's extremely difficult to get a contractor of their own. So they were forced into using the township. I, I mean, I, I had 43 yards of cement poured, and it took me almost four and a half weeks from the time I contracted till the time I got my driveway poured. So it's very difficult. You put a hardship on the resident because you don't give them enough time, and you force them into, you know, contracting somebody he might not want. You might want to consider two things, putting a price tag on this, looking for an update on how the first, you know, phase went, and things gone right, things gone wrong. But I think you should give the residents a little bit more time in between the notification and the drop dead date, because contractors are very difficult to get a hold of right now. Thank you.
Mitch, do you want to address that? Phase one in.
Sure, I can address that. I think the idea of bringing the annual sidewalk replacement program to you now versus when we brought it last year is we have more time. The intent is to send out an additional notification as soon as we get those initial defects identified, and give the property owners the chance to make those repairs this year even before we get to next year. As far as the price tag is concerned, I think we have bid pricing at this point from five different reputable contractors. I think we have a rough idea of how much it costs per square foot. As far as a total program cost, you won't know until you know the number of defects in the, in the district. It can, it can range depending on the district, the age of the sidewalk, the number of trees, and number of other, number of other issues.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Mr. Supervisor.
Bring it back up to the board. Trustee Joseph.
Yeah, I think the, the question that I had, and I was looking in the packet to see, when the speaker asked about program costs, obviously that comes from the, the relationship. I think the question you answered was, what does it cost the homeowner to replace the slab? And we don't have bids and such for that. But what does it cost for you? What is the cost of the township for you to Spalding DeDecker? So it's noted in our packet, same as 2021, but could you, could you discuss that number?
Sure. Yeah, the township ordinance actually addresses this and allows for 25% of the construction costs to be handled, to be added to those sidewalk costs. So, looking at our per-square-foot price, unit price of, of concrete, the ordinance allows those costs to be increased by 25% to cover planning, engineering, construction, administration, et cetera. So we, we do have somewhat of a cap on our number based on that township ordinance.
Can you update the board and the public on what your, what your fees were collected in the 2021 program? You have numbers on the number of sidewalks replaced and so forth. So what was the Spalding DeDecker invoice or fees associated with this program?
Sure. We, we don't have a final number at this point, because as I mentioned, there's about 100, thus far, there's 140, or 148 residents who've added sidewalks to the program. Those are also subject to that additional surcharge. And the, there's also been some sidewalks that have been added through the township, through different water sewer structures, et cetera. So those numbers are somewhat in flux. I wish I could give you a better answer, but we're, we're still working on that final number.
Of the original 885, what was the, what was the revenue collected in the way of fees?
Revenue collected in the way of fees, I think, was in the range, I don't, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I believe the construction costs were somewhere around 285,000 was the construction cost, so then the engineering fees would have been 25% of that. But since then, I know it's increased and added quite a bit, based on what residents have added.
So, the ballpark is 75,000, a fair statement?
Sure. I, like I said, I, we won't have a final number until we get to the end of the program. We're working on that right now. We're, we're going to be finishing construction here towards the end of the week, and we'll have a much clearer picture on that.
Mr. Supervisor, I would just end my questions with a comment, and that is, we brought in some time ago, an in-house engineer, and what this vendor has just described is roughly the salary of what will, what will end up being the salary of a full-time engineer. And I don't think the sidewalk program is a full-time 2,080-hour-a-year job. So the question becomes, why aren't we outsourcing another one of these? And, and we're, next agenda item is, we're going to be talking about the sidewalk gap, which is a whole different ballgame. So my, my concern is that, I think, I think the non-motorized path and all of the things that were outlined have been talked about for many, many years, and I'm not sure why we keep contracting everything out. So that, that's, that's the reason, I guess, I'll precursor, this was the reason for my no vote, and I would like to see this done in-house. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Joseph. Any further comments? I have a motion by trustee DeMink, seconded by trustee Vos- Treasurer Elliott.
What services are, that are included? Could you give us a description of what your services are that, that you guys provide with the program?
Sure. Yeah, so that starts from day one with a, with a number of qualified inspectors that go out and identify these defects. We log those defects via data collector back into our GIS system, which we share with the township staff. From there, we put together assessment rolls, we put together mail merges, which essentially we create the letters for the township to mail out, as well as providing labels, et cetera. I think this year, we actually mailed out all of the letters directly. From there, we put together contract bid documents, which again, we get, we have a lot of history with a number of other townships, so we were able to reuse some of those documentation, put together plans, bid these out, go through the recommendations of which contractors are viable and which ones are not, all the way into pre-construction meetings, handling resident complaints via the email, via the hotline, construction administration, which includes, you know, change orders, adding, adding additional township-owned sidewalk facilities to direct inspection and material testing, all the way down to closeout and final assessment.
And did you have an engineer on site often, or always, or?
Yeah, we, we had, our, our construction manager is, is a licensed engineer. I myself am a licensed engineer. We did have several licensed engineers that were out in the field doing these evaluations, as well as seasoned inspectors. So it really took a team to get all of this done, because there is quite a few moving parts.
Thank you. And, and I ask that because this happened in my neighborhood. So every morning, for the last week and a half, I, I saw the Spalding DeDecker truck driving around along with the Deltas construction. And it, it actually has been nice, some of the people who were affected, yeah, they, they did come over and say, you know, at the, at the end of it, there were, there were problems, right? There were things that didn't go well. But for the most part, I think most everybody's happy. And there were some other things that we identified that we didn't realize, such as the manholes that were three, four inches up. And there are some kids that live in a, in a house there that that was an issue. And we also found some, some manholes along some other areas that we had to address as well. And those are, it's nice to take a walk, again. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Elliott. I have a motion by trustee DeMink, seconded by trustee Vosberg. Clerk Barry.
Trustee DeMink.
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
No.
Trustee Joseph.
No.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
Item 8E, clerk Barry.
Approve a recommendation from the engineering department to authorize Spalding DeDecker to provide engineering services for the sidewalk gap planning and funding application in the amount of $30,000 from GL number 101446928000.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Support.
Motion by trustee Vosberg, supported by treasurer Elliott. Mr. O'Connor.
Good evening. Again, Jeremy Schrot with Spalding DeDecker has another brief presentation, and then we are available to answer questions.
All right, so we talked about the sidewalk replacement program. This is really dedicated towards those other two items, which are the sidewalk master plan, planning, and then the sidewalk gap planning. Again, you know, the idea is to provide a safe network of non-motorized pathways throughout the township. This is really focusing on connecting neighborhoods, schools, businesses, township, recreational facilities, et cetera. So looking at some of our big goals of who are we trying to connect to where. So, just, just a high level, the township has up to about 100 miles of sidewalk gaps or, or areas where sidewalk doesn't exist. Obviously, that's more than we can handle at any given time, so we really need to, you know, identify what are the priorities and, and work our way through it bit by bit. Just out of curiosity, for zone one, we went through and mapped out the number of sidewalk gaps that existed, just wholesale. And we're, we're looking at more than $10 million in potential sidewalk construction dollars just in zone one alone. So we're talking a unsustainable amount of sidewalk if we try to tackle it all at once. So we're really looking at, how do we prioritize this? What do these segments cost? What is fundable and what is not fundable from various grants? And that's what the intent of this program is to look at. There is a master plan, and the master plan does start to go through segments of non-motorized pathways, as well as sidewalk gaps that the township would like to address eventually. We don't plan to reinvent the wheel. We plan to look at that master plan and work through that to provide estimates and a five-year capital outlay, as well as identify which of these segments could be potentially fundable through the number of funding sources available in the state and the area. So some of our next steps is to extend, expand that GIS gap identification to all zones, utilize the township's master plan, as I mentioned, to look at priorities, and then create that five-year capital improvement plan based on, how much funding is the township looking at putting in from their own capital fund, as well as what's available from grant funding? And then, the last part of this is to submit funding applications for year one, which some of the projects I know that we've identified from previous discussions was the Cotton Road Bridge over I-94. There is, there, there are no sidewalk facilities that exist over I-94 at this point, and you're one of the only townships in the area where that doesn't exist. And then, an extension of the Jefferson Ave pathway. So again, this is, looking at this program, starting to identify some potentials, and then looking at eventually, potentially adding some of these sidewalk gaps that are going to be funded through township capital funds into the sidewalk replacement program to maximize the value from a bidding perspective. Try to increase the amount of sidewalk to reduce the square foot price. And I guess some things to leave you with are, the opportunity is to create this long-term plan, and as I mentioned, the potential to include these gaps with the sidewalk replacement program to maximize the value. But really, what we're looking at here is, timing is key for funding applications. We really need to have these segments identified and start working through the process, because a lot of times, these take more than a year to get through the program. But the, the opportunity would be to line them up for every year, so we're ready when those applications are due to submit and hopefully continue to gain funding year over year. And that's, that's all I had.
Thank you, Jeremy. Bring it back up to the board. Discussion by the board.
Just, just-
Trustee Joseph.
I'm sorry. I should have waited. Apologize. Just a quick math. The first slide that you showed, zone one, just as a, I guess, indicator of what we could be, the, the slide I thought had the, the gap related was, there was one area identified as 6.6 miles and another, I thought, at 14 miles, roughly 20 miles of the original statement, which was, we anticipate over 100 miles. But just looking at the raw, raw numbers, 20 miles in zone one represented $10 million. If you look at expanding that out, you know, one-fifth of the, the 100 miles, you're talking $50 million potentially in gap sidewalks that would need to go in. And then, I don't know if it is, you know, too early to, to predict, but would, would Spalding DeDecker then be looking at 25% of those costs as well? So are we looking at a Spalding DeDecker expenditure of 25 million just to see what, the 100 million, you know? So, again, this is, the bigger the project, the more I think the argument becomes, we have GIS capability. The funding applications in the proposed agenda item represents $5,000. We spend money to send people to SEMCOG, our supervisor, our treasurer. When I was the representative for the board to SEMCOG, I attended a grant writing course that was provided by SEMCOG. And again, my argument on this agenda item is the same as the last agenda item, and that is, if we identify over 100 miles of gap, what special services and techniques do we, do we need to bring in an expert like you? And I honestly do not question your skills. I know that they're top-notch. I just think that we have some qualified people here that can look at specific areas around the township. And I would, I would beg my fellow board members, instead of adopting the zone one through six protocol that was put in place for the sidewalk repair, that we just, we all, we all live in this community, and we know the areas that are the most critical. You mentioned one, which is the Cotton Road Overpass. I would argue that the amount of money we've spent on the Marine Memorial, and then we have a veterans facility right up Sugar Bush, we, we can't have visitors from the veterans' home- We, we can't have visitors from the Veterans Home traverse down Sugar Bush to get to the Marine Memorial. That might be something that we look at as a priority where there's, where there's a huge gap. You will, of course, have my attention at that point because the sidewalk is going to go in front of Trustee Vosberg's house. And I know that she'll be really on top of that. And that, to me, is, is, is the, the heart of this, is that we're talking about a lot of money. And I appreciate your recognition that 100 million probably isn't doable. But strategically looking at areas is an area that I feel completely confident in the amount of staff and, and qualified people that we have here. And you're talking massive numbers over a long period of time. And again, I don't know how many more things we can contract out without looking internally and saying, why do we, why do we own it and buy it in the market through third parties at the same time? Like, at some point, we have to say to the taxpayer, this is your staff and this is what they do? Or we're going to contract everything out? And, and this is the area that I have the most concern. It certainly isn't in disbelief that we have a perfectly good sidewalk and connectivity and all of that. We all agree that, that there needs to be improvements in these areas. Non-motorized paths are something that I've been hearing about and talking about with SEMCOG for over a decade. And I just disagree on how we're getting there and the cost that we're putting into the consultants on the front end. That's just my only concern. And for the same reasons, as the last agenda item, I'll be voting no on this.
Thank you. Trustee Joseph. Any further comments from the board? Comments from the public?
Joe Katic, I live on Sutton. I'm concerned about the non-motorized paths and other paths that we have in the township. Now that the last one, the walkway from the Salt River Bridge along Jefferson to Sutton, we paid, I think, $300,000 for it. It's about 300 feet. Your company designed it. We did it because people were walking on a gravel shoulder alongside the road that was four to five feet wide. We paid $300,000, got a walkway that's two feet off of Jefferson, no barriers, and a five-foot sidewalk, no, excuse me, an eight-foot sidewalk instead of 10. Everything going north from 23 Mile down Jefferson is 10-foot wide, and at least 10 feet, in some instances, 20 feet off of Jefferson. Now, we've got something here that's two feet off the highway. It drops down a foot onto the, onto the sidewalk. I brought pictures of this thing in here, wondering why we ended up spending, you know, about $1,000 a foot to fix a safety issue that we didn't fix. All we did is get a below-grade cement walkway that people can, you know, if a car slides off the, off of Jefferson, you're going to nail somebody. I had suggestions how to get it further away. Obviously, Dan Acavetti didn't want to listen to those, would have been about the same amount of money, but would have provided a certain thing. And that's the other thing I have about here. Trustee Joseph's talking about our township engineer. A lot of this could be done for, by our township engineer. Basically, all he does now is shuffle paper, puts out requests for a bid. Not even requests for bid, puts out requests for studies, and then goes to bid. Not utilizing him to what he should be. He was basically hired because of the recommendations of the Water Board when we had it before.
Mr. Katic, you want to speak to the sidewalk?
Hmm?
You want to speak to the sidewalk and not the employee?
All right. But again, that sidewalk was designed by the Spalding Decker. And it came in here. Somebody should have caught the fact that it didn't solve our problem. That's the other problem we've got here. It comes through, you sign these things out, it comes back, and nobody seems to look at what the final result is. They just go with it and then find out, oh, we got a problem here. The other part of it, if you look at what's happened at the Paddle Park, we don't have sidewalks there. We've got paths. And it's some type of amalgamated cement, gravel, whatever. And after it rains after a season, it's bad news. And you've got the same thing in, in the park along the fish habitat. My wife, I took my wife up there to look at the park last week, and she, she has a cane. She couldn't even walk on it because it's so unsitty. And you're worried about a, a half-inch gap or a five-inch gap in, in between sidewalk things. You've got a problem here you've got to address before you start getting after the township residents for a problem with their sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public?
Paul Lefata, 48055 Mallard. This is all being done on GIS. Like Trustee Joseph said, township has, you know, capabilities to do in GIS. It's got to be similar to new design criteria. You, you put a point here, and you put a point here, and you strike a line from here to here, and it tells you you need so many feet, minches, millimeters of sidewalk. Not understanding $30,000. Also, this is going to have to be put into the master plan. So that means that Giffles and Webster, Giffles and Webster are going to get involved in this. And there's going to be more costs. Do we have a conducive plan from start to finish, dollars and cents? Or are we just going to have a study and we're going to put our hands over our eyes because we're going to find out it's so many millions of dollars that it's not feasible? We're biting off too much too fast. We should pick a little section, and we should work on it. We should fund it, and we should do it. We should have a good plan, not a overall plan that's never going to get instituted. And when you look at the Jefferson pathway, the design was eight feet. But if you take a measurement, take a tape measure to it, it's only six foot nine inches. That's where you, we pay, pay the same and get less.
Any further comments from the public?
John Speka, 53978 Connor Drive. We've gotten very good at ad sourcing here in Chesapeake Township. At a $30,000 price tag, we're going to have to make a decision. We either subcontract everything out like we're doing now, and then we get rid of the engineer and other people on staff and cut our costs, or we cut the costs out of subcontracting. So, Mr. Supervisor, that's, that's going to be on your shoulders. You're going to have to make a decision on which way we're going to go. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? I'll bring it back up to the board. I have a motion by Trustee Vosberg, seconded by Treasurer Elliott. Madam Clerk, please call.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Trustee, Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
No.
Trustee Joseph.
No.
Trustee Domingue.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
Item eight, I believe it is F. Item eight F, Clerk Barry.
Request approval from the township board to place the attached list of 2021 street lighting special assessments on the 2021 winter tax rule.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Joseph, seconded by Trustee Domingue.
Sorry, Trustee Domingue.
Deputy Treasurer Clark.
This is our annual request for approval to put the street lighting on the winter tax bills. We charge the residents the exact amount of cost that we get from DTE. And if you see in your packet, depending on how many lights are in that particular subdivision, it varies the cost.
Any questions from the board? Public comments? Public comments? Seeing none? Bring it back up to the board. I have a motion by Trustee Joseph, seconded by Trustee Domingue to, for item eight F, to approve item eight F. Clerk Barry.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Domingue.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
Item eight G.
Request to place the 2021 detention pond special assessments on the 2021 winter tax rule.
Do we have a motion to support?
So moved.
Clerk Barry. Motion. Support. Support by Trustee Joseph. Deputy Clerk Clark? Treasurer Clark?
These are our annual costs for the detention ponds that we maintain. As you see in your packet, the maintenance and any electric bills that we, we are charged for that particular detention pond are, are there. If we have any repairs or anything else through the year, we then put those on also. I mean, it's spread through the subdivision in which that detention pond services.
Thank you very much. Discussion from the board, anyone?
Just a quick question, Mr. Joseph.
Trustee Joseph, yes.
Do you, I noticed in all of the detention pond, as you go through the individual subs, subdivisions and such, there is an indication on weeds. Do you, do you know what the mechanism for weeds? Are we using any glyphosate in the weed removal? Or is this weed, just as it indicates, cutting?
It's just cutting.
Thank you.
Our facilities and maintenance cuts the weeds, and they usually cut it like four times a year. So they send us the cost in which they incur on that.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the board? Comments from the public? Seeing none? I have a motion by Clerk Barry, seconded by Trustee Joseph, to approve item eight G. Clerk Barry.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Domingue.
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye. Item eight H.
Approve a request by Public Works for the emergency repair of a Bracewood Detention Pond Pump from Kennedy Industries at a total cost of $17,475 from GL number 101-446-939000. Accompanying this item is a request to approve a budget amendment to GL number 101-446-939000, increasing the budget from $30,000 to $48,000.
Move to approve. Support.
Clerk Barry?
Or Trustee Anderson.
Trustee Anderson. Director Johnson.
All right. Good evening, board. So this agenda item, we, we maintain in the township seven detention ponds with agreements. This being one of them. You guys are somewhat familiar with our sanitary sewer lift stations and having to repair pumps. Our stations and sanitary sewer normally have four pumps in them for added security. These retention ponds only have two. So when one goes down, it is dire emergency because this keeps stormwater out of people's basements. So I got approval, or we got approval from Supervisor Kirsten and Treasurer Elliott back on August 17th via email to proceed with the repair of this pump. It is still currently in the process of being repaired. So we are all working on that. And actually, Kennedy is working on that. And then the increase in the budget is due to the fact that we do not plan on budgeting for pumps like this to fail. We haven't in the past. We plan on doing so in the future here in the next budget. But this is a part of an SAD program as kind of described on the previous agenda item. Unfortunately, this one missed the run for this year, so this will be applied next year. So this cost will be recouped on next year's tax, winter tax rule. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Comments from the public? No comments from the public? I have a motion by Trustee Vosberg, seconded by Trustee Anderson, to approve item eight H. Clerk Barry.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Domingue.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
Item eight, aye. Thank you.
Approve a recommendations by Facilities and Operations Department to authorize Michigan CAT to repair six generator units in the amount of $9,071.18 from GL number 591-441-863000. $2,773.73 from GL number 591-541-933000. And $4,570.87 from GL number 101-265-933000.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Domingue.
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Barry. Deputy Duchene.
Thank you, Supervisor Kirsten, and I'm filling in for Director Sonnenberg tonight. The recommendation, I would like to clarify that the, on the front purchase amount, it stated in individual sections that actually should be a total recommended appropriation of $16,415.78 through all funds. It'd be divided by $11,844.91 water and sewer with $4,570.87 from the general fund. The, prior to the current CAT contract, the township used a different contractor. Our fleet and equipment coordinator, Jeremy Jox, is here tonight, developed a new contract, and the RFP was placed out. As you recall, back in March 9th of 2021, the board approved the recommendation to award the contract for generator inspection and maintenance to Michigan CAT. The repairs and maintenance tasks in the current requests were identified during the first round of the inspections by Michigan CAT. The three-year service contract sets forth regular service inspections. A list of those inspections is performed on each of the unit. If any areas are found, it'd be in need of repair, as such are posted tonight. Then Michigan CAT prepares a quote for the estimated repairs. These are the estimated repair quotes that are before you tonight. So it's a recommendation to the board that you approve repairs to your six generator units by Michigan CAT in the amounts formerly, formerly stated.
Discussion by the board. No discussion from the board. Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I have a motion by Trustee Domingue, supported by Clerk Barry, to approve item eight, aye. Clerk Barry.
Trustee Domingue.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Item eight J.
Approve a recommendation by Facilities and Operations to enter into a land transaction application to explore the possibility of purchasing state-owned land, commonly known as Brandonburg Park.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Vosberg, supported by Trustee Joseph. I'll make some comments. I'll make some comments about this item. This was actually mine. When I first took over the Brandonburg Park lease agreement with the DNR was originally created in 1974. As the township has invested several millions of dollars into that park, it was learned through the lease agreement that the DNR hasn't provided any financial support to it. We've historically repaved the parking lot. We have a capital plan to maintain that parking lot. There, the boat ramps themselves are, are in need of repair and upgrading. And while entertaining, the original discussion was just to renew the lease and modernize it with some current language as relates to what we can and can't do with gate fees and such, the opportunity to enter into a discussion with the DNR to buy the parcel came up in that discussion. There is an application process. The state does have a process. In a conference call with our legal counsel and the DNR representatives, I felt that it was beneficial that we at least explore this opportunity or this option of buying that park directly from the DNR. or this option of buying that park, uh, directly from the DNR. We own the parcels or the township owns the parcels on the north and the south side. It is a parking lot. It can't be used for anything but a parking lot and launching boats. And I think it would be beneficial for us in the long run to at least be autonomous and have some, um, self-control over what comes and goes and how that parking lot is managed. And if not, if, uh, we can't agree on this, then we can update and modern the lease agreement and revert back to, uh, uh, that original, uh, task. So, um, that's where we stand. This is an application request. This is not, I'm not asking to enter into a purchase agreement or anything of that nature. It is simply just to explore this opportunity to purchase the property straight out from the DNR and then, um, have the entire, the entire park owned by Chesterfield Township. Clerk Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just so that the board is aware, in your packet, in the executive summary, you will see that there are three options with relation to this particular item. If the board does choose, uh, or if the motion makers do decide that option one is the one that we are going to pursue as we proceed with our discussion on this item, then I would just simply ask the motion makers to amend their motions, uh, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven if option one, uh, is in fact the one that we'd like to go with. The motion would be to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven and approve option one as provided in the packet.
Thank you clerk Barry. Now, again, those are the options listed. I probably should have summarized it a little bit better. There are three options in the packet. Um, they're pretty self-explanatory and, uh, I would, I would, um, I would like to pursue the option to purchase, which is an application process. Um, and there is a fee to that, a minor fee that, uh, we have to apply to the state with, so.
Brad.
Trustee Demink.
I think it's a good idea. Um, you know, the park's been around for a long, long time. I remember when it was just a grassy marsh back in the seventies. Come a long way, um, especially with the DNR owning owning the center. We own the north and south. See where this goes. You and attorney Seabert and through the process and legally see where we end up and hopefully it, uh, comes like you and I discuss back in your office. Thank you.
Trustee Joseph? I'm sorry, trustee Vosberg.
Thank you. Um, regarding the, the comment of whether or not to, um, whether option one, it's. If that's, if that's what we need to do to clean it up, I think that would be a good idea. But I guess I, to me, reading it, it would be option one. Then after doing option one, you would look at, consider, do we then do two or do we do three? But if we want to clean it up and just say number one, that's probably a good idea.
And that, yeah, that's what I, I'd like to enter into discussions with them for option one for the straight-up purchase, but then if that fails, um, at least sit down and and renew and upgrade, modernize the lease.
Right.
And obviously I'd bring that back to the board.
Sure. Because based on the, the findings of number one, it would come back to us anyway, regardless of.
That is correct.
Whatever data you you accumulate, information would come back to us. Thank you.
Just a clarification, Mr. Supervisor. I don't remember. Did, did I make the motion? Did you make the motion?
Uh, the motion by trustee Vosberg, seconded by Joseph.
So is the motion to, uh, just, as, as the motion is read now, um, the motion, uh, the agenda item reflects transaction application, which is option one. And so the request would just be to add the three hundred dollar application fee to the, to the, uh, agenda item, uh, to the motion?
A suggestion would.
Yeah, all, if I might, all you're doing is, if you, if you want to proceed with, with having the DNR take a look at whether or not they actually are interested in selling the property in the first instance, you simply adopt the resolution that's included in the packet. There was a form that they had submitted. I revised it to make it crystal clear that this is not binding on, on the, on the township. And once the board, they, they will not accept your application without a board resolution saying that you're at least interested for the DNR to have a look see. So if you adopt the resolution, then the application will be submitted. You'll pay the nominal filing fee and that's it. And, you know, six, eight months from now, you make it a knock on the door from the DNR saying that they are interested or not. If they are, then they're going to have to have the property appraised and then it'll come back with an appraisal fee and the board will have to approve that appraisal fee. So other than the nominal application, you've got no exposure at all in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion from the, any further discussion from the board? Discussion from the public? No further. No comments from the public? I have a motion by trustee Vosberg, seconded by trustee Joseph to approve item eight J. Do I, do I need to be specific on, on option one? Which is a land tran- transaction application purchase with a fee of three hundred dollars. Clerk Barry.
And to adopt resolution twenty-one, twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
Great.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Demink.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
Item nine, addendums. There are no addendums. Item number ten, public comments. There's a five-minute time limit for public comments.
Good evening township residents and board members. My name is John Speka and I reside at five three nine seven eight Connor Drive. I'm disturbed by what I saw and heard at the, uh, last board meeting by two elected members on this board, one being trustee Vosberg and then the other being Ms. Elliott in regards to the road improvement discussed on twenty-three mile road between Grashit and Chesterfield. And the other, the ad sourcing of the water bills in Chesterfield Township. With the road improvement on twenty-three mile road, trustee Vosberg had a very difficult time understanding and comprehending the three options that were presented to the board. When it came to discussing option three, she didn't understand it was a temporary fix, which consisted of a two-inch mill infill that could last up to seven years at a cost of two hundred thousand to the residents. It was a fifty-fifty split with Macomb County. It was a temporary fix to a very dangerous stretch of road that needs to be repaired immediately. Some of the questions asked by trustee Vosberg were right in the packet. Had, if she only bothered to have read her packet and prepared properly for the meeting. With her frustration of not fully understanding option three, trustee Vosberg votes no to the twenty-three mile road improvement. Her excuse was that she didn't know if the improvement would last more than two years, even though it was discussed several times at the township meeting that the improvement would last longer than two years. Trustee Vosberg also complained that the two hundred thousand dollar cost should not be picked up by Chesterfield Township residents. But when it came to spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on Brandonburg Park, Weber Park and the trash car program, she had no problem voting yes with the former supervisor. I didn't hear trustee Vosberg or Ms. Elliott asking, where is the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar Weber Grant Park money that was promised by the former supervisor to all the residents? Still, as of today, we still have not received that grant money promised by the former supervisor. Not only have we not received it, but nobody at the board is even asking about the money that they gave the go-ahead to proceed forward. Unfortunately, the inability of the former supervisor to follow through on his promises to the residents of Chesterfield is now going to fall on the shoulders of the new supervisor, Brad Kirsten, to make sure that the residents get their two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars promised. You're in charge and now it's your obligation and it falls on you. Ms. Elliott, you're another elected official that didn't read her packet prior to the board meeting. You asked elementary questions that are contained in the packet. You complained about not being able to speak because trustee Joseph monopolizes the conversa- the conversation. Don't believe that for a second. The only person who's not able to speak are the residents who had their time cut by forty percent. Ms. Elliott, you don't have a time limit on board comments and you know it. Quit playing the sympathy card. Ms. Elliott, you had a problem, you didn't, Ms. Elliott, you had no problem cutting the resident's speaking time by forty percent from five minutes to three minutes. You have the time to, you had the time to watch the board meeting over again and tell the residents how long each board member and resident spoke, but you didn't have time to prepare yourself for the meeting. Ms. Elliott, you said trustee Joseph wins the prize at forty-six minutes. Forty-six minutes of asking the right questions and trying to get to the truth. I will take David Joseph's forty-six minutes of talking and asking questions any day over your three minutes of just hearing yourself ramble on. Ms. Elliott, you voted yes to the ad sourcing of the water bills in Chesterfield. I think, I think we should outsource your position and save. Save the taxpayers a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year because we all know that you have a fancy title and that the deputy treasurer really does all the work in the treasurer's department. The treasurer's department would be fine outsourcing your fancy title out. The other responsibility you have is at least to show up to work on a daily base, Monday through Friday, eight to five with weekends off. I've been told, I've been told that you have several, that you have issues showing up to work on a regular base. I would be embarrassed if I were you. There's no excuse you're not in the treasurer's office every day. Would you be paying the township employees for not showing up for work? Why is that any different for you? If you don't come to work, but you collect a weekly check, that's equivalent to stealing. You're costing the taxpayers money.
Time's up, Mr. Speka. Thank you. Further comments from the public?
Paul of Fata four eight oh five five Mallard. Um, the outsourcing in the township's getting to be a norm. Um, we'll, we'll take the sidewalk gap plan, uh, and we'll compare it to a little bit of common sense. We're, we're looking at a number up there of fifty million dollars and we're going to spend thirty thousand dollars. If I was going to build myself a new home, would I pay an architect thirty thousand dollars to build, to design a five million dollar home for me that I know I could never afford? It's going to sit there on the shelf? Or am I going to go in the basement on my drafting board? And in my spare time, I'm going to utilize my own skill sets. I'm going to design a house that is going to cost somewhere between four and five hundred thousand dollars that I know I can afford to build and it'll be within a tie frame. We're, we're looking at biting off more than we can chew. We're using an outside contractor and we're not utilizing our own internal skills sets that are supposed to be available through our engineer. Uh, it, I, I thoroughly don't understand it because myself, I wouldn't spend my money. Uh, I wouldn't spend the township's money. I spend my money more freely than I do the township's and the common sense just isn't there. Uh, it's, it's very, it's very hard to understand how we can spend thirty thousand dollars for a sky in the pie fifty million dollars. It isn't going to happen right away. We can bite it off a little bit at a time and we can make it happen and it wouldn't cost thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we should be able to do it internally. I could do it internally. Uh, I just don't understand. Maybe, maybe I was born in the wrong decade. Thank you.
Comments from the public?
I came here specifically for one item that apparently was removed from the agenda. And that was the, uh, recommendation by the Public Works, uh, in the sewer and water rate study qualifications based selection group to do a complete study for the cost of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to determine the cost of water for our township. I think we've done three of these over the last three or four years. Nothing's ever came of them. And basically some of the things, if you look at the brochures prior, prior to this being pulled, what they had in there was they wanted to do certain things and that was like ice off the enterprise fund so that things couldn't be tapped out of there for what they weren't used for. Basically you had a certain amount that the water department used to run the water department. You had money that went in there and it was saved until you were replacing lines. You had money that to pay the, the bond bills. And it, you couldn't take any part of that away, which is what we recommended in the water and sewer rate advisory group years ago. So that nothing gets such as, over the period that Dan Ekevetti was here, those things are all muddied and water was spent. I can remember the first study he required, that he wanted to put a sewer line down, uh, Grashit Avenue, where there was a sewer line already. He wanted a, a larger sewer line, uh, and it cost about four million dollars, basically so that it could provide sewer to somebody wanted to develop the golf course in the Northwest Contra. Unfortunately, he wanted to do it with taxpayer money out of, not a taxpayer money, but water and sewer rate money that was paid by the people that buy the water and sewer. That got shot down, but that study cost money and I don't think he ever forgot it. And along the lines, somewhere, if I'm not mistaken, somebody told the building that was building that story, that senior citizens home there, that story, Stone Story or whatever hell it is, uh, to use a larger sewer line coming from their sewer line into the existing smaller line at, uh, at home. Now you've got a problem out there that was caused and somebody okayed it here and I don't think it's ever going to go away. But things like this have to stop in this township. I think, I think it was the right direction to ask for a water in sewer rate city. My recommendation would be, is to reset up the water and sewer rate committee, even if you've got three people. There's enough of us around here that have been through that. We know everything that happened in the water and sewer department, what the bills were and I think back then. We knew what had to change. We made the recommendations in a white paper that was completely ignored. If you want to really do something to make the water and sewer rate, our wa- water and sewer department effective and be effective for the people, set that back up and let them oversee the water department. Let them oversee what you were proposing here to do the study. It could be done. You don't have to go to the outside because at the outside, you get what you pay for. And that, that's essentially, they'll ask you, what number do you want to see? And that's what you're going to get.
Mike Orton, five oh three nine three Bauer. Uh, one of the things I was kind of a little, um, confused over was the exorbitant amount of time being discussed about a refrigerator here. And it really dawned on me after many years of coming here, maybe that's the ultimate reason why you don't see more people participating in local governmental affairs is because there seems to be a lack of prioritization. You s- I, I don't know, but had to have been between twenty and thirty minutes on discussion about where people keep food within this building rather than the priorities of local governments, which ultimately citizenry don't care about what happens with, between employees within their governmental buildings, but rather about what government itself does for its citizenry. In these times, we have seen, um, rampant amount of, uh, distrust in government at all levels, whether it be state, local, federal, even amongst school boards now. We're seeing a lot of disinterest and, uh, hostile attitudes going on. Ultimately, it's more or less a reexamination amidst everyone in elected and even appointed positions that we reexamine what our commitment toward, uh, the public trust and the citizenry really is. If that's not the case, then it, you sow more distrust. And that's why you see all, a lot of, a lot of our issues today are due to miscommunication and just a lack of trust within anything. Whether it be the issuance of the pandemic or the handling of the wars or the. Whether it be the issuance of the pandemic or the handling of the wars or the issuance of the economic stimulus packages or any type of governmental spending, policies, regulations, tax laws, you name it, there is no trust anymore between citizens and governing bodies. But there is hope though, in the sense that this is the local government portion. And as I've tried to explain many times beforehand, this is that capability right here where citizens who are living within a district can participate within governmental affairs. But as we've seen tonight, it's, it, it just seems like petty issues. We, we have citizens who are, you know, dealing with things regarding, you know, some people who have been on unemployment for quite some time and now they, now they, they're trying to find a job. There's lots of job prospects out there, but there's still issues with the labor shortages and people accepting people within jobs. We have seen an increase in a lot of bad things in our society, whether it be from obesity, drug abuse, opioids, that sort of thing. It's not saying it's, it's, within Chesterfield, it's, it's terrible, but it's everywhere. And so if we're not seeing government taking care of the prioritization of issues, why should anyone feel they need to participate within this type of governmental body if it's just going to be this back and forth? Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? Bring it back up to the board, trustee Demink.
Congratulations, everybody at the PD, all the men and women for their work and the commendations they got from Captain Franks on a great job on two homicides, especially I know what's involved in that type of work, but great job and a great job to your team, Captain Franks. And I apologize I wasn't here at the last two board meetings. I had some health issues I was dealing with, so I'm back for now. Thanks.
Trustee Vosmer.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I concur with what has already been spoken by trustee Demink and also just to remind people that this coming Saturday, as was already announced, there will be the heritage days with all the construction going on here in the front parking lot, which is getting better looking as, as they move along. There will be shuttle service from the back parking lot, so anyone that comes here will be able to get brought right up to the bridge to get into the historical village.
Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. Likewise, congratulations to our officers. We had a mini crime spree here, our crime spree here earlier in the year and very unfortunate and good work by our officers. I know there was some reference, one of the speakers was talking about the inordinate amount of time about a refrigerator. You got a point there, but it was interesting how that discussion, how it evolved. That area back there secured from the public. There's an area in there which is a kitchen facilities or refrigerator. That area is only normally by our employees, which I believe we have an outstanding group of people working here dedicated to do a tremendous job. I was kind of mildly offended. There was an allegation, a very strong allegation, a chicanery and tampering with food. Apparently somebody is going in there stealing food, tampering food, whatever. And as trustee Joseph said, some of these things might, might be criminal in nature. And instead of coming up with a rationale that we need a refrigerator stuck in the clerk's office when the deputy clerk's gone, I don't know how you get in there. I would hope that our H and R and our supervisor clandestinely will pursue this. If it's necessary, Captain Franks, your, your staff quietly look in and say, if we have an issue in there, let's address it. If it turns out to be smoke and mirrors, let's, let's get to that too. If you need a camera in there to watch the refrigerator, maybe that is one of the options. I don't know, but I'd like to get to the bottom of that before we get these stories. I was going to talk about the water and sewer rate study of about eight years ago. There was a couple of board members on here and about twelve good citizens that worked in inordinate amount of time and they, they took everything apart there. One of the things, and I think quite unfortunately, a lot of it wasn't followed, a majority. One of the things they came up with was several years this township was paying at that time about four hundred thousand dollars a year to engineering services and it was really questionable. A recommendation come out is to have an in-house engineer perhaps pick up some of that. And I'll be honest, I'm not talking about anything negative, but it seems like now our in-house services are strictly kind of a chaperone service. Well, let's go here, let's go there, let's do that. We should perhaps figure out how to translate outsourcing into Latin and consider that for the, the new model for the township for the near future. I hope that to see a lot of you out this weekend at the historical village enjoying a little visit to the past. Thank you.
Trustee Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'd like to start my comments with recognition and some acknowledgement of a couple of very serious issues since we last met. I had wanted to start our meeting and, and we, we got off right, right away with the presentations, but we, we lost two very valuable members of our community since we last met. Of course, Mr. Weber, Wayne Weber, who passed away and was a fixture in this community and I was very appreciative of supervisor Kirsten, your comments in the paper regarding his commitment to our township and what he meant to us. And then the other tragic loss was Pamela Kraft, who operated the Drop Everything and Dance, Dance Studio. I think seeing the amount of tears and real heartfelt, just gratitude for her presence in our community from her dance students, which lined Gendron Alec Funeral Home last week from one end of the building to the other. Being there, I, I know she meant a lot to other members of this board and she was a, a real gem. She was somebody who was very, very committed to our community and worked with the, the children and the youth for an incredibly positive interaction. She's going to be greatly missed and I wanted to acknowledge both of their passings tonight. With regard to a couple of the agenda items, I'm sorry that it seemed like a, you know, wasted energy, the discussion initially about the bill run, but I echo trustee Anderson's comments. It really wasn't about that transaction, it was about the process. And there is a fundamental belief by some of us here that the average resident is not able to dedicate the time to take away from their family to watch every transaction that occurs with their government. It's a representative democracy and the title that we have is trustee and if it is not to be stewards of the financials and policies and procedures, I don't know what it is. So really if the, if the discussion seemed to be about a mini fridge, I would ask you to look a little deeper into the transaction because it had more to do with policy and the first several questions that started that were directed at the treasurer, who has in, in her tenure, seen some things that she believes could be tightened and I applaud that. And so it really was not about a mini fridge as much as that, you know, term was utilized in the discussion, it had a lot to do with how we spend the taxpayers' dollars. And I think if we, if we watch the pennies, the dollars sort of take care of themselves. But if you don't have a procedure that you follow on a consistent basis, then the, the transactions that are completed with the, you know, silly mini fridge, you know, I, I thought there were some fairly substantial issues, you know, on the agenda tonight. When a presentation includes potential capital outlay of a hundred million dollars, you know, that's big money and we're talking about how we navigate that. So procedure is very, very critical. Speaking of the procedures and the agenda item that was removed tonight, that, that was a, a one that I was interested in talking about and a couple of the board members, a couple of the participants, public participants tonight who talked about the water and sewer rate advisory committee. I remember being in this room for hour after hour after hour, talking about what a thousand cubic feet of water looks like and the increments of measure in terms of the bill. And one of the things that I'm most proud of that came out of that water and sewer rate advisory committee was the acknowledgement that for years, what had, what the transaction was, when Detroit Water and Sewage would pass on a five percent rate or a three percent rate, the entirety of the percentage was just sort of rubber stamped by the board and the practice was to add a few half percent or so to whatever Detroit charged us. That was inclusive in the water and sewer rate advisory committee that sat in this room for hour after hour, every, every month and sometimes twice a month, was to look at what is the best practice because it, it was determined that a five percent increase by Detroit in water and sewer may be only pennies on your water bill, but if we increase your water bill incrementally, we're also increasing the costs associated with getting the water and to your house and sewer out of your house. So we adopted a pass-through which would only speak to the commodity, the, the water itself. And we started to, to dive and drill in a little bit deeper on what the actual water bill was made up of. And we knew in, in other discussions that personnel is the biggest cost. And so when we had on the agenda item and the conversation that I had with the supervisor today, when we're going to look at water and sewer rates, we have to look before we determine what the rate should be. We have to make every investigatory action possible to look at, are we delivering the product in the most efficient way? We see this at our budget discussions. A few, a few board meetings ago, one of our department heads was talking about acting as the general contractor and how we could save money by doing things in-house and how in-house labor could save money and the, the term that perpetually is used is we get more bang for our buck. But only in F and O, DPW and all of the very similarly positioned jobs is that an allowable transaction. Captain Franks couldn't have twelve officers on the, on the job at a designated time and only have two cars on the road. And if we said, why did you have ten officers on the payroll because your personnel costs are high? He couldn't say, well, I, I called them in to paint the, the PD and by me acting as the general contractor, I can save money. See, it would, it would be ludicrous to say that, but we do that in our DPW and in some, some areas, our facilities and operations. We have DPW employees that sort of get commingled with other township projects. So when the consumer pays the water bill, they think that they're paying only things associated with getting the water to their house and the sewage out of their house, but that may not be true. And one of the mechanisms for tracking man-hours is a software program that this board purchased, which is BSNA. And one of the things I'd like to applaud the supervisor on is currently the township is taking a hard look at DPW and making sure that that department is efficient. And we've brought in experts in terms of accounting and Plant Moran is now in with our professionals looking at exactly these things that we've been talking about on the water and sewer rate advisory board for many years. And when BSNA software was approved, we were told that we would be able to track projects. And tracking projects also includes the man-hours and every time one of these in-house projects comes up, I ask for what are the man-hours associated with the job? And in my very limited research, this isn't my craft, this isn't what I do, but BSNA is a boutique software company in that they cater to municipalities. And if you go to their website, you can watch a, a very eye-opening tutorial on what the products are and what they offer. And one of the things I noticed that they offered was any project that you're going to utilize township resources. There's an entry point for how many man-hours or worker hours, I should say. What tools are associated with the project? So are we utilizing township vehicles? And we hear from Vicki Bauer, who talks about depreciation costs. And so all of these things are individual line items in the BSNA software that gives, gives us a great indicator of what these projects truly cost. But if I take DPW employees and I put them out at Brandonburg Park and I, and they are working on fish habitats and so forth, it's not a surprise that later on we might hear that we don't have man, worker hours to cut the grass and we need to contract that out and it's a smart resource to contract that out. But you don't have unending supply of revenue in the enterprise fund. But if we raise the rates, we can, and who's paying attention to that? What, what resident can you, you know, like I, I talk to residents all the time and I can, I can start, you know, a conversation, but I can tell you ninety-nine percent of the township isn't going to be aware of how their water, water bill is put together. That's what they elected us to do. And I, and I'll sit in this room with twelve of my fellow residents and talk about thousand cubic meters of water and what that, all day. That's what I signed up to do. That's what they, that's what I hope people know I'm doing here. That, that, I'm going to ask those questions and I'm going to investigate a little bit more about BSNA software so that when I do have an opportunity to talk with those individuals who are putting these projects together, I won't just simply be told that the supervisor, no offense, but we've heard for years, a, an answer to a very direct question is, is given a subjective answer and that is, I'm very proud of the team and extremely confident and all of these subjective terminology. When I really want to know is how many man-hours, worker hours are attached to a particular project. That's just basic, that's just basic understanding and I think that the supervisor is on to something when he and I spoke. And I hope that the reason that this was pulled tonight was because it is an indicator that before we even consider what a water rate should be, we make a pledge and we deliver on that pledge to the residents that we will not increase your water bill one penny unless we have certainty that we are operating in the most efficient way possible. The department that I've worked the hardest on is Captain Franks, and trustee Anderson can attest, we got into, we got into this role as a trustee because we were worried about our police department and we were worried about whether or not there was financial resources to support it. We had two failed millages at the time that we came on board and we've dedicated our entire service to making sure that Chesterfield has Chesterfield PD and without it, we are not Chesterfield. This, this has been an unwavering, non-negotiable area for us and tonight we let off the board meeting with an example of why that should be our priority. But I can tell you that our police and fire are held to a different standard in terms of accountability for every nickel that they spend and they were required in the fire department to submit to very, very tough audits to ensure that the public collected taxes were gone, would go to what the public allocated them. So it is beyond time for the other very high generating revenue or, or, or funding stream and that being the water department undergo the same thing. It's, it's mandatory. Last comment I'd like to make is the, several board meetings ago, I made a pitch for why I thought it was a good idea for you, Mr. Supervisor, to have a township vehicle. And I util, I used the example of the two homicides that we were talking about tonight as an example of why you needed to be on the scene. And I heard back from people that I have complete faith in and I think there may have been some offense taken and I'd like to apologize because we saw tonight an outstanding example of leadership and it wasn't just the feedback that I got internally from department officials, but also outside the department and in talking with the prosecutor's office about how that scene was managed and preserved and the care that went into every element of that crime scene from the interview and interrogation of witnesses to the preservation of evidence to the care and concern that was afforded the deceased and the communication with county departments, medical examiner, so forth, was done top-notch. There, there wasn't one area of the township public safety team that was deficient in any way. And I apologize if my request for- And I apologize if my request for the supervisor being on the scene was taken as an offense because if it was, I was out of line. I don't want to make one of those, I'm sorry if you were offended, apologies. I'm sorry because we have some top-notch people out there, and I'm going to address that with them individually. But I wanted to make a public statement that I was wrong in my assertion that in order to preserve evidence and so forth, we needed the supervisor there. We're in great hands, and I am incredibly impressed and just in awe of the work that's done by our public safety team. So both of our chiefs here tonight, please extend my apology to any staff that you may have that heard those comments, and I am deeply sorry, and I will reach out to them individually. Thank you.
Treasurer Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'd like to also echo the other board members tonight and thank the officers who were here this evening and honored. I also want to thank Trustee Joseph for mentioning the two pillars of the community that we lost recently, Wayne Weber and Pamela Kraft. And I also echo the sentiments that you do, the tears and the emotion and the impact that Mrs. Kraft had on the community. I also want to echo Trustee Joseph's comments regarding the bill run. What you saw tonight was an exercise in a very civil conversation, which is going to bring about, I think, good results at the end of that. And I want to wish everyone a safe week, and hopefully it won't be raining when we leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'd like to update the board and the public on an event that is coming up on September the 25th. It is the North Grashit Cruise that is being put on by our Grashit Avenue Chamber of Commerce. There was a luncheon this afternoon that I was very pleased to be at with Supervisor Kirsten and Trustee Joseph. And Supervisor Kirsten did a phenomenal job of representing Chesterfield Township and speaking at that event that took place here in our township. Congresswoman Lisa McLean also was present and spoke as well, and I will update you on just a few things that she talked about that I don't think people are aware of, but some important things that she was asked about as well. But the North Grashit Cruise is going to be taking place on September the 25th. That is a Saturday. That is over at the Coles and now Value City parking lot, and that will run from Village 21 Mile to 23 Mile. This year, there is a new event that is being added to that, and that is a 5K run that will occur in the morning. People are welcome to apply for that. Information about that event and everything associated with that day is available at the clerk's office. There are flyers available. I know we get calls every single year. Everyone looks forward to that. It's a tremendous community event. A lot of great classic cars come out. Friends of Chesterfield Police are often there, along with various other community service organizations. And just, it's a great community event for everyone to enjoy themselves and build community together. And so I'd like to thank the Grashit Avenue Chamber of Commerce and their president, John Johnson, who is also a resident here in Chesterfield, for facilitating that and helping bring our business community together with our service, community service entities, along with elected officials in the community at large. It really is becoming a defining event here in Chesterfield, and they have a very exciting addition, and that is the 5K run in the morning. So it's an all-day of events for Chesterfield Township, and I encourage you to come out and participate in that event. Congresswoman McLean, Lisa McLean, who was elected in 2020, has certainly hit the ground running. And she was here in Chesterfield Township briefing all of us at that event on some of the things that she is finding as she's been in Washington, D.C. She covered a number of issues and was asked a number of questions regarding government mandates, the border, voter suppression, others had reached out to her when she got there, being a freshman. And she covered all of those topics absolutely beautifully. Congresswoman McLean truly does work for all of the constituents in this district. And I encourage you that if you have any concerns or questions or issues about what's going on in Washington, D.C., to call her office. Her staff is excellent, and they would be very happy to help you. She certainly is advocating for this community bringing back millions of dollars in road funding, which of course, many of you know Michigan has been a donor state to the federal government for years. We've often, in other words, we have sent more money to Washington for roads and infrastructure than we've gotten back. And actually, Congresswoman McLean worked with Congressman Levin, who is her colleague on the other side of the aisle, to bring some of millions of dollars back to Macomb County for our roads and infrastructure. So congratulate both of those congress, members of Congress for doing that for us. And that leads me to an important point, and it goes to one of the comments that I heard someone from the public say tonight. And that is one of the things that Congresswoman McLean talked about is she talked about working with colleagues that are on the other side of the aisle, people that perhaps don't necessarily agree with her on everything, but she reaches out to them, and she reached out to every single one of them. Senator Stabenow, Senator Peters. And, you know, people told her that she was nuts to do that because they would never work with her. And she said, that's just not true. Every member of the Michigan delegation, House and Senate, really does look forward to working with each other, and they find ways to do that. They find common ground. And I think that that's an excellent lesson for all of us who work in government at every level. We need to find common ground. We all want to do what's best for our community, best for our residents. We may disagree from time to time on how to do that. Tonight is kind of what you heard, so please don't be disheartened by that when you see that we have disagreements. In this case, we had an issue internally, and I came up with a solution for that, and not everyone agreed that that was the route to go. But it was a solution, and that's okay because we'll figure out a way to deal with the problem collaboratively, and that's exactly what we should be doing. No one needs to be hung up on pride of authorship, right? It's a matter of solving the problem and solving the issues. And I can tell you that Supervisor Kirsten, Treasurer Elliott, and I do that on a daily basis. We have a great working relationship. We meet every Monday in an executive session to talk about what we perceive as happening for the week and how we'd like to approach those solutions. So I can certainly say for the three of the full-time officials, we work very well together to come up with solutions to problems that we have to deal with every day here internally. So I really feel that that's the best way for people to get the best bang for their buck, to get the real value out of your government is when your elected officials and your administrators are working together to solve problems together creatively, if necessary. And so she talked about doing that. She talked about doing that with Senator Stabenow. She talked about doing that with Congressman Levin, again, both on the other side of the aisle from her, as well as with her own Republican delegation. And she centered it a lot around, it's all about providing customer service. It's all about providing service to those who we were elected to serve and to try to re-establish trust in government that has been lost or eroded over time. And again, at our local level, I know that I'm dedicated every day to doing that, and I do that with Supervisor Kirsten, Treasurer Elliott, and they are very gracious in participating in that with me. So I'm very, very pleased. This is really probably the first time since I've sat on this board in nearly 10 years where we've had as much cooperation and collaboration among the three full-time elected officials. So we're really headed in the right direction, and that was my message to that group today is you haven't seen anything yet. Chesterfield is going to be, it's already an amazing place to live. It's only going to get better, and we are all moving in that direction. And I'm happy to work with the other four trustees who are, we see a couple of times a month in order to make that happen. So from the top on down, from your Congresswoman down to the local level, I can see just a great amount of collaboration and cooperation, even though it may not necessarily look that way. I can assure you, this is the best that I've seen it in almost 10 years, and I'm very encouraged by that. And I want to thank you for sticking with us, thank you for your patience. Thank my board members for that cooperation and collaboration. I think it's good government. Thanks.
Thank you, Clerk Barry. Just going to make some quick comments. There will be no water rate proposal brought to this board without facts and data and proper information, properly vetted, that the board will have full ability to study and use and make their decisions on, based on the best principles that we can put forward. The, we're growing. This community is growing everywhere. In just the three months that I've been sitting in this chair, we have a problem. We have an infrastructure problem with water and sewer, and we have a capacity problem. We have a water sewer problem that needs to be addressed. They are being addressed. They'll be addressed in a public forum, in a public format, and the board will, again, get all the information necessary to make the proper decision. You may not like it, the resident may not like it, but it is what it is. We'll base those decisions on facts and what the professionals tell us is the best course to go. Appreciate the construction in the building and the parking lot, you'll see, be careful walking out. We are in the midst of our budget process. We are refining it, as has been said by many members of the board. We have presentations prepared that includes an APO review and updated processes, as already discussed. That's, that will be an ever-evolving review. And like anything, once you complete the process, you start over and review it again. So that will be implemented and started with the completion of this budget year. Sidewalks, a lot of discussion about sidewalks. As a chief of police and a police, I'm tired of going and watching pedestrians getting hit on the roadway. You may not like Salt River Bridge. It may not have been the best solution, but there's a sidewalk over the Salt River now. Does it still need to be corrected? Absolutely, and there is a solution in process with the road commission and the proper engineers to try and fix it. And that goes through throughout the township. We have many areas that the sidewalk gap needs to address. And what we found out, what I found out, is prior to the implementation of this sidewalk plan, we didn't have one. There was no action on it. So getting tired of seeing pedestrians getting hit on the roadway, I'm all for the sidewalk plan. And I know that, as the comments said, yes, it appears to have been rushed. It appears to have been put in front of the board rather quickly. And I think that with Phase Two, we fix it. We continue to evaluate it and we move forward. But I think that is a, I think it's a sound plan. And again, moving forward, we refine it and we make it amendable to what fits the township. As was stated tonight, again, Treasurer Elliott is here. She's working. She's accessible to me. Clerk Barry, here, present, accessible to me. We have a great working relationship. There are many projects that we need to address, and we will continue to address that. But in my three months of sitting in this position, I have nothing but cooperation, nothing but participation. And as stated by both of them moving forward today, that'll continue. The goal is to make the township better. The goal is to make every department better. And that is an area that I'm going to live within until elected to this position. And we're going to look at systems. We're going to look at infrastructure. We're going to look at what the township can do to improve our employee utilization. And we have some great ideas that the board will be presented with. And that process is going to continue moving forward, and hopefully we'll have a good solution to present to the board. With that being said, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
DeMing, Trustee DeMing.
Second.
Second by Clerk Barry. All's in favor?
Aye.